Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, June 25th, 2024, work session to order. Ms. Watkins, what do you call the role?
Mr. Evelyn.
Here.
Mr. Moyer, Ms. Pearson.
Here.
Mr. Steers.
Here.
And Ms. Stewart.
Here.
Good morning, welcome. First item this morning is the update from Cox on the New Kent County broadband expansion project. Ms. Rice?
Can you all hear me? Good morning. As Mr. Scher says, my name is Erin Rice and I'm a manager of government affairs for Cox Communications, and I have had the distinct honor and privilege in working with this board on our fiber expansion project here. It's been two years in the making, and I'm happy to report all of the great work that we have done. I'll run through this PowerPoint presentation, which will also be made available to the clerk, and Rodney, you can share that on your website as well. Just a little overview of what I'll talk about today is where we started, how we're doing, and then I'll show some maps, and then talk about what's next, and then open it up for questions from the board. The last two slides, the marketing and sales resources and installation, what to expect, are just resources that you can have as you share those with your residents. I won't necessarily go into those today, but they are available for your reading. Okay, how we got here, about two years ago, so August of 2022, we signed an agreement with New Kent County to deliver fiber optic broadband network to every home and business within the county. That project was a capital investment of roughly $34 million collectively. A portion of that money was from the county, and then another portion was an investment for Cox. And as it indicates on the slide, those monies from the county were special revenue funds, both from the charitable beginning money at Colonial Downs and Rosie's, as well as the ARPA money that has been allocated to the county. Just as a slight overview, our, the way that we build our network, we build it in multiple different phases. The first phase is the design and engineering, which took the first part of August, from August 22 to December of 22, we were in the design and engineering phase. That phase, we have to have those designs in the way that the network will be constructed in order for us to submit those permits. So that's what we did the first six months of this project. And then the next phase is the aerial and underground construction, which you probably have seen our trucks in the field today, and they are, I passed them along the way as I was getting here this morning. So there is active crews working today on the construction. And then we get into the third phase, which is the line instinct, line extension, and then the fiber to the home installation phase. Right now, all three of those phases are kind of happening concurrently. We are still permitting, we are still designing the, that last OLT, and that we will be working on towards the latter part of this year and early next year. We're actively building and we're actively installing customers with that, those line extension constructions and the fiber to the home. Just as a timeline of the work that we have done so far, the site survey work began in September of 2022, and our first set of permits, we received late December of 2022 from VDOT, and that construction began in January of '23, right along New Kent Highway, right outside. Our first set of homes were released in August of '23, and then we are scheduled and on target to reach complete universal coverage with fiber connectivity within the county no later than December of 2026. Where we stand to date, we have construction about 380 miles of fiber here in the county. Just as reference, that is from this place here all the way to New York City, in terms of about the same distance as that. So it's a significant amount of work that has occurred in the last 18 months in that first permit, and when that first construction began. We have seen about 1,900 previously unserved residents receive that fiber connectivity, and then, which is about 30, 63% of the total 3,000 unserved that we identified through the contract. Additionally, as we outlined in the contract, that Phase 1 and Phase 2 are kind of being done concurrently, as it made sense. So there are portions of Phase 1 that we had to build through to get, or portions of Phase 2 to get to Phase 1, and to speed this process along. We are doing that concurrently, so you will see about another thousand overbuild homes that have reached that fiber connectivity as well. We have seen really good success and really good response from the residents here in New Kent, and about 60% of those residents that have now have that fiber service available to them have taken advantage of that opportunity. And each month, our monthly reports that Cox submits to the board and to, to the county administrator does include those total number of homes passed, as well as the total number of customer relationships that we have. That's a snippet of time. Those numbers continue to increase as we continue to have those home installations, as well as the construction work that we're doing right now. Just once again, some, I've said this before, but this is one of the largest fiber expansion projects that Cox has had in our company, and we are tremendously excited that it is here in Virginia, and more specifically in New Kent County. In total, this project will include about 600 miles of fiber, which like I said, we are at 380, so we're well over the halfway point in this project. We have five different OLT cabinets. Those OLT cabinets are the ones that are spread out throughout the county, and those are what's giving the light to the fiber, and allowing those residents to connect to those services. Four out of five of those have been installed at this point, with the last one being installed later this year. There are 45 different service groups throughout the county. In the contract, we talk about clusters, and clusters are a little bit larger, and so in order to have it more manageable for our construction teams, we have divided them into 45 different service groups. Of those 45, right now, 11 of them have been fully completed, and four are set to be complete by the end of this quarter. So as you guys know, that is by the end of the week. So we're about 15 of those 45 completed this time. Those 45 include both the expansion homes, as well as overbuild. Some service groups have a little bit of both, and some are completely exclusive of just expansion, or on the reciprocal, just overbuild. Additionally, we have received to date 750 private easements as a part of this project, which is a tremendous undertaking for our teams and our land use teams. But I do appreciate the members of the board and you working with your residents to get these private easements, because they have been critical to the design and the build of the network. So thank you for that. I know we will have more as we continue to build, but that 750 number is one of, as I've said it before, one of our largest numbers of easements we've had to obtain through building. And just two more numbers, 100-plus pole attachment applications have been submitted to Dominion, and we have connected to over 3,000 poles within the county. Additionally, we have a significant amount of underground work that we have been working with VDOT on, just like the pole attachment applications. This is a significant number of permits that we have worked with VDOT on. It's probably a lot that they did not anticipate, that they, but we have a great working relationship and have been able to streamline that process. Obviously, there are permits that take a little bit longer, ones that go under the right-of-way, or go over 64 crossings. We have several of those. And as you guys know, that there is a construction project underway to widen 64, which is requiring VDOT to do, do their due diligence to make sure that all the permits are in place and don't have any engineering concerns. So those take a little bit longer, but we have developed a really good partnership with VDOT. Just as an overview, these, this map here outlines those 3,000 previously identified unserved passings within the county. As you can see, they're, they're pretty spread out. There are some in the northwest corner of the county, there are some in the Barrensville area, and there are some down in Lenexa area as well. And so each one of those represents a passing that we will have either reached or will reach by the end of this project. And this is our serviceability map, which we will now be including in every monthly report that we have, just to give you guys an update as, as we move along in the process. Those areas, those service groups shaded in green means that the construction teams have completed their work, and now we have reached the line extension customer installation phase. All of those homes in that area have the ability to connect to our fiber network, and those residents there, if you, if your residents are in those green, please certainly reach out to our Cox Communications team, and we can get those installations occurred and served. I will say, throughout this, we have reached some residents that have expressed a desire not to be connected, and we understand that, honor that, and respect that decision. Of that, it's only about 1%, so the, because we continue to say that there's a lot of excitement for this project here. Of, as you can kind of see the shaded, we have some service groups coming on, like I said, in Q2, then Q3, 4, and then we will forecast for those homes in 2025, at the beginning of 2025, and those homes are exclusively the overbuild portions of the county. Just a little bit about the work ahead. As, as I have indicated, we have 11 service groups that have currently come online and are serviceable. Then we have about four that are supposed to be in this month, and we'll work, we'll work to update that map to include those, those four, which have all been on track to be completed. And then we have nine in Q3, eight in Q4. So that's an additional 21 service groups that are looking to get that connectivity by the end of 2024. As I've mentioned before, that Phase 1 project focuses on the unserved locations, and per our contract, we have in 28 months from first application of permit being received. So that would be 28 months from December, so that is the first part of 2025. And we are on track to meet that deadline, and as our teams wrap up, like I said, we will get into that line extension and home installation phase. Once we get into 2025, we really focus exclusively on the overbuild portion of the project, which outline in our contract, we have up until the end of 2026 to have that complete. I will admit that we, that's a long time away. I do not believe it will take all of that time, but that is what is outlined in our contract. I will say, we have 13 more service groups with those overbuild locations within the county, and in total, once everything is complete, we ha, will have about 11,000 passings, that's both homes and businesses, with the ability to access the Ciber, the Cox Fiber Network. And, and lastly, I just, I just want to make mention that this project to Cox is more than about infrastructure. We really want to be a community partner, and long after the shovels are in the ground, we hope that this is an ongoing relationship with this board and with this community. Since we started this about two years ago, we have seen an increase of community and volunteerism here. We've worked with the, the food bank and the food pantry there just across the parking lot to make sure that was stocked. We've also donated some funds to New Kent County schools to increase their STEM equipment availability, and we've also supported small businesses here and their ability to grow because of their fiber connectivity. So it's long past just putting the shovels in the ground. We really want to be a good community partner and build a New Kent for the, the future. And so with that, that's all of my prepared remarks, and at this time, I'll take questions.
Thank you very much. Very good update. Anybody have any comments? Ms. Rice?
Yes, Ms. Rice.
Good morning.
Thank you for coming here today and giving us that update. Are you familiar with the Groves, the age-restricted community in the farms of New Kent?
I am not.
Okay. If you could give me an update, maybe away from here, on what's happening in that neighborhood?
Mm-hmm.
I had a homeowner speak to me this morning, and apparently, all the different residents are getting different feedback on, on how their homes are going to be handled.
Okay.
They were all under the impression that the, that Cox would go through their backyard, but that might not be the case on all of them. It's, might be a case-by-case basis, but how is the communication in, when it comes to large neighborhoods and stuff? Do you have like a community meeting beforehand? Because that's what they would really like.
We can certainly set up a community meeting, if that is something that you and your residents desire. We do have a Cox Communities Team that focuses on outreach to HOA communities and those multi-unit dwellings. So, but certainly, I, I don't know specifically that community.
Okay.
But, so I would have to go back and ask what outreach has currently been done.
Yeah.
But I'm happy to set up a town hall or-
Yeah, that would be great. I guess they're reaching out to the workers, and they're getting different answers, and that is a community that talks to each other a lot. So if, I mean-
I feel like that's New Kent in general.
Yeah. There was one homeowner, I guess, that claims that they board under their driveway, and now the driveway's cracked. How would you handle a situation like that?
We, we have had several situations where we've received damage complaints, and we do have a process for looking into those and resolving them as, as we need to. It's an active construction project, so there will be missteps, but we do our due diligence to make sure that if that does happen, we resolve it.
Okay, so you do remedy things like that?
Yes, we have a whole team that looks into it, yes.
Okay, okay. We'll be in touch then, and maybe we can have some sort of community outreach to that community. That would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Rice, again, thanks for being here today. We appreciate it. Everything sounds great and everything, but I want to tell you something. In the last couple of weeks, I have never had so many complaints.
Okay.
From residents all across this county. And mostly, it's because of the haphazard work that your guys are doing out in the field. And I hate to be a negative person, but, you know, I don't know who else to talk to except you. And I have talked to Barrett Stork, and he's helped me out tremendously in the past, but it's, it's the little things like trash being left in people's yards. They said cans, empty cans, I assume they're Coke cans, not beer cans. They, they, they've left cable laying in the backyard for two weeks. A large spool of orange cable was left in someone's front yard for two weeks. A parked trailer, equipment trailer was parked on his lot for three weeks. The landscape repairs are less than desirable. They're coming back and filling in the dirt. Some of the holes are not even filling in, they're just putting straw on it. Deep ruts are being left in driveways. A, someone lost water. They drug, they, they dug right through their water line. They were without water for a week. Are you getting any of these reports at all?
I would be remiss in saying I got all of them.
Not all of them, but you got-
I have not gotten all of them.
Well, you don't want all of them, believe me.
So I, I will take some of these notes that I have back-
Right.
-with our construction team to look into the situations that you have identified, and, and see, one, how can we rectify what we have done, and two, how can we ensure that it doesn't happen again?
Right. And I appreciate it, because, you know, we all make mistakes, but, you know, the only way you're going to correct it is if you know what the mistakes are.
Exactly. So as you hear from residents, you and the members of the board, please alert me to those, because we can't fix it if we don't know it.
Right. Well, like I said, I have talked to Barrett Stork several times, and he, I called him one morning at 11 o'clock, and by 2:00 that afternoon, he had it taken care of. So I appreciate the work he does. And, you know, I had one lady that she was planting her garden in her side of her yard, hit a root, and went back inside, and she didn't have internet. So she went back out and looked and realized it wasn't a root, it was a Cox cable that was only about three inches below the surface. And you guys sued her. She got, you got a lawyer, you sued her for $1,300. She said, I, you know, it was a mere mistake. The cable should have been buried a lot deeper than that. She offered to pay $600 towards the labor, whatever. She was told, no, you had to pay the $1,300. That is not the way our people need to be treated, okay? So, and I even got her lawyer, the, your, your lawyer's name, the case number and everything, and Barrett Stork called back that afternoon and said it had been taken care of. Because she had signed, when she signed the agreement with your company, she marked a box in there that she would have insurance for any destruction of. Why wouldn't you have figured that out before you sued her?
I can't speak to the specifics of that situation.
Okay.
But, like I said, I've made a note of that, and we'll circle back.
Well, I'm sure Barrett Stork has a copy of the name, the address, and all that, okay?
Yeah, Barrett is getting ready to be a new father, so that is why he's not here with me this morning.
Well, I thought he was already a father. No? Yeah, well, some lady said, well, who could you send over? I said, I could send Mr. Stork, but you don't want him to bring a baby to your house, you know? So excuse what this-
I can send my kids to their house if you want.
But those are just the things that are just irritating. And then I was in a meeting with Mr. Hathaway yesterday, and he's received an awful lot of calls himself, you know?
And, and I apologize for that. Like I said, please continue to share those with me.
Right.
No one likes to get bad feedback or bad news.
And I don't like to be the one to report that to you, but those are some of the things that are going on that would make our life a lot easier if it was just people taking pride in their work. And, and another thing is that in most cases, and even in my, they were in my neighborhood yesterday, I can't find a single person that speaks English. And it's hard to communicate with someone. They do understand the word "boss." So I got the boss to call me, and we discussed what was going on, and, you know, we'll see where it goes from there. But it just needs to be more, better communication between your company and the residents, and, you know, we've had several residents that have lost their internet connection for two or three days in a row, and they're working from home, and these people are high rates. So anyway, if you look into that for me, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly, and like I said, I will follow up with our construction teams on that.
Stewart?
Firstly, thank you, Mr. Steers, for not making me the negative one today. But Ms. Rice, thank you very much. You and I have talked and emailed probably ad nauseam about the same exact thing that was happening in my district, and I appreciate you working through that in such a timely fashion, and really remedying a lot of the, just angst towards the project. I know a lot of the folks in Barrensville were like, oh, we've never had Netflix before. Oh, we can order Amazon. So I was like, I hope that, you know, balances out how pissed you are about your garden being dug up. But I do, you know, I echo the same sentiments of Mr. Steers. We did have a lot of issues, and I know they can be worked through, so I appreciate, you know, you staying on top of that, and Mr. Stork. And the communication could be better, but again, I just appreciate you working through that, calling me on your daughter's field trip. So I really thank you for that.
Well, you're welcome. And this, this project is a labor of love for me. I've been with Cox about two years, and this project has been in place about two years. So I have seen it good, bad, and, and, and great. So I do appreciate, and I will follow up with those other issues and setting up that meeting as well. We, we're a communications company. We want to do the best that we can in communicating, not just through technology, but through our voices and our people. So please continue to provide me that feedback, so we can continue to improve this process.
I think what Ms. Steer said, so we're not all negative. I think it all depends on what crew you have out there. I mean, because I have had positive feedback from, you know, some of the crews I know in my district, and then, like, then they go somewhere else, and, you know, it all depends on what crew I think is installing line is your issue. I think if you can go to Ms. Steers, Ms. Stewart, the areas they're talking about, and find out who actually was doing the subwork there, you probably find out who your issues are, because you do have some crews that are doing some good work as well.
Well, thank you.
I've had that. So, I got, on the commercial side, are businesses able to hook up to Cox?
Yes. So the, the services are available to both businesses and, and residents to connect to, so-
There was some misinformation a little, a month or so back about that.
I think that related to the line extension piece of the contract. So in the contract, it outlines that line extension, so depending upon how far back on the road, so if you were beyond that 250 feet outlined in the franchise agreement that we have, that, any of that expense will be covered on, at Cox's expense, not the homeowner. And I think that there was some, that's where some of the, the conflict or communication with our businesses, what does that mean for them? And if a business is within, you know, our footprint, they will be connected. And I know we have been working with Ms. Pearson on a church that is, is working with our Cox business team to get connected. So if you have a specific business that has a concern or an issue, please just refer them to me, and we can work with our Cox business team.
Was it Cologne, was the issue with Colonial Downs? Was that, before Mrs. Smolnik left? Getting hooked up? Because that's, I mean-
If it's Colonial Downs-
That's gonna be a problem.
I will, I will take note of that and look into that issue. I had not heard if it was Colonial Downs, so if it is, we will circle back.
Okay, thank you.
And if you do know who it is, and it's not them, just let me know too.
All right. All right. Thank you for the update, and you're gonna leave with some market stuff, what we can share, what you-
Yes, so I will make this PowerPoint, like I said, there's, throughout here, you'll see the, the landing page, Cox.com/getfiber. It has all of the information that you would care to need in terms of what to expect when you're expecting construction, what to expect when you're expecting installation. And you can fill out this form to get updates as progress ensues. We also have, these are just examples of some of the materials that residents will see, both on their doors, in their mailboxes, and, and around, in yard signs and flyers, some of our affordability options. And then, like I said, this is, and this link, there is a video, and it just walks through the installation process. Once people come into their home, when people come into their home, they want- When people come into their home, they wanna know exactly what's going to happen when they're there, and so we've done a really good job with this video and this explanation of what is happening, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a great meeting.
All right. Uh, our next item is the EPA mandated, mandated lead service line inventory. Mr. Corner.
Uh, good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Can you hit, can you hit your button, please?
Thank you.
Sorry, my apologies. Um, good morning, um, thank y'all for your time, I won't be long. Uh, my name is Thomas Corner, I am the utility engineer for, uh, New Kent Public Utilities, under, uh, Michael. Um, I'm here this morning to ask you, uh, your constituents, um, our valued customers, for help. Um, in our annual report that we just sent out, um, this month, actually, we included an invitation, uh, to participate in our online survey to help us identify water service line materials. Uh, the EPA has mandated that all public water suppliers, um, generate an inventory of service line materials on both the public and the customer side of the water meter. This part, this is part of an effort to screen for and detect water service lines constructed from lead or using lead containing materials. Uh, whether it's copper pipes, PVC, galvanized iron pipes, or more importantly, older lead pipes, we will use results of the survey in an effort to replace all lead service lines that may exist in New Kent County. Um, in just a short couple of minutes that I am speaking to y'all today, a New Kent County water customer can go, uh, can check their pipe material, uh, fill out a quick online survey. Um, all they have to do is first find their water service line entering their house. Um, this is typically in a basement or utility room, near a water heater or possibly the washing machine. Once they find the water service line, um, they can do a visual test, they can, uh, there's a, what they would call a scratch test, or even a magnetic test to determine the pipe material. Um, they can take a picture and then take a, uh, a short survey. It's just a simple, kind of a one-page survey. And also, the customers can visit our info site to learn about their water lines, their water service material. Uh, that's pretty much it in a nutshell, um, if y'all have any questions. Anybody have any questions?
Just a question on the annual report, you mailed that to all the users of public water?
Yes, all, all, uh, utility customers.
So it's safe to say that anyone that you are asking this of has the information they need to do what you're asking?
Yes, in the, in, on the next to last page, we have a simple one-page guide, um, there is a QR code, um, that they can, that will take them to the survey itself. Um, there's also a, um, website that's in there that they can go find more information on, you know, on the, their service line or other materials as well.
And Mr. Hathaway, we've put this out on social media, haven't we, or have we? I feel like I saw something about water recently.
We, we, we have put that out on social media, and, and we'll put that out several more times as well.
Thank you.
I'll jump in there, we, um, we've advertised the water quality report is available. Uh, we're working with, um, a media person to do a short video specific to the, uh, service line inventory, so we'll have that out, um, relatively soon. Thomas, you should mention the due date, as well as the date range of, um, homes.
Yes, um, this October, um, the EPA is requesting us to turn in essentially our first version of, uh, the, pretty much an inventory of every water service line in the county. And then from that point forward, a- as we move forward, we will work to eliminate any possible, uh, lead service materials that we find.
Mr. Corner?
Yes, ma'am.
This may be a dumb question. So, the purpose of this is to eliminate the lead, is that?
That's our ultimate goal, um, that's the, the goal that's been mandated by EPA is, is to eventually eliminate all lead containing materials from the, we know, water system.
Okay, and that will be at our expense or the homeowner's expense?
Um, it depends on what side of the, of the property line. The utility, as far as I'm understanding, the county will be responsible on the county side.
Is that perhaps the apprehension of responding to the survey? Um, that it's gonna be an added expense to the homeowner?
It could be an added expense, but also at the risk of, you know, you know-
Sure.
Drinking or, you know, consuming water that, yeah, that's known to have health risks.
Sure, okay, just for clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
For clarification purposes.
I just have one last question.
Sure.
Um, is the inventory that y'all will submit to the EPA only made up of self, um, identifi- like, these surveys that people are responding to, or are y'all doing any of that?
We will be reporting on every known, um, water service line that is a customer of the public utilities. Um, non, no, co- you know, there are water users, um, there are other company, private companies that provide water in the county, and that will, reporting on those services will be up to those, those groups.
Was, do, when you say known, does that mean you know about them because the resident has responded to your survey? Or you know about them because they're a customer?
Because we, we have, yeah, that they're a customer, um, and pretty much, you know, e- even, especially newer, you know, developments and stuff, um, we can eliminate them just on the basis of, you know, when they were constructed up to nineteen, I think it was eighty-six, um, that lead containing materials were allowed to be used in construction. Pretty much anything after those dates, we can eliminate right off, and that will be part of the inventory that we send in, that we can eliminate those without, without even having, um, yeah, a return on the survey.
Anybody else? Thank you.
I do have one thing to add.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, somewhat related, um, as Thomas mentioned, all the customers, utility customers, received this just last week, New Kent Annual Water Quality Report in the mail. I also received just last week, New Kent Annual Water Test Notice. This came from us, this did not. I got a call from a lady yesterday asking if we were soliciting water samples from customers in Patriots Landing. We are not asking customers for samples at this time. We do have to get out in July and August and get lead and copper tap samples in certain neighborhoods. So, you can see where the confusion's going to come from. Our water operators have orange shirts, clearly labeled New Kent DPU. They have a white county truck, clearly labeled. Anybody else that's asking for a water sample from your house does not represent New Kent County.
That's good information.
If anyone has questions, call Public Utilities, please.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next item is the presentation update of the new animal shelter, Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Um, I'm gonna invite Jay Hobbs and the sheriff and his staff, uh, up, up to the table uh, to give an update on the animal shelter project, as you are aware. We're currently in the engineering and design phase, and we've recently, uh, have gotten some engineering and design back from our contractor, David A. Nice Construction. Jay?
All right, thank you, Mr. Hathaway, I certainly appreciate that, members of the, honorable members of the board. We do come back before you this morning with some information, updated numbers from David Nice Builders, um, showing their ninety percent completion. And we have gone through, also, they've provided a lot of different comments to us a- as far as in their itemization of the items that will be listed in the building. We do have, I think everyone may have a sheet with you, with some of the issues or concerns that we had, and some of the questions that we had for the contractor with the general comments, that they have addressed in there with the ninety percent completion. Uh, those figures do represent all the questions that were listed in, in this document. So, i- it is the best numbers that we have in front of us today, uh, that, uh, comes from the builder. I do know that we had, um, some concerns with water, with well, that, uh, originally had a tremendous increase in, in cost for the well. That has all been rectified, uh, we will not need the capacity that they were originally recommending, and-
We're still carrying a heavy, heavy allowance for that.
Right. And I'll turn it over to you if you have something else, Jay.
Yeah. Can you hear me? So, the well, uh, was a big deal, it, it caused quite a bit of a price hike from the sixty percent to the ninety percent, um, design package, and that was primarily because of the gallons per minute requirement that the engineer was saying we needed to have for the emergency shower and eye wash in particular. We're able to take that down to about seventy gallons per minute, so we still don't have firmed up pricing on that, but the contractor has provided an allowance of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the well. We've also done some other value engineering by taking out the Schedule eighty underground piping, pulling that back to Schedule forty piping because it wasn't required. And we did, in the offset of that, um, these two pages of comments, there were quite a bit of adds from the sixty percent to the ninety percent that we made, uh, just alterations and changes. So all of that has now been captured, all of these comments have been captured in the updated pricing, and, um, I guess, Mr. Hathaway, if you pass this out, the final prices, uh, I'll let you see that. So, the, the final came in at about, uh, five point seven two zero, five point seven two one, which is still considerably less than what we had from the competition, uh, with Horgan and Henderson Incorporated originally.
As you can see from the, um, spreadsheet that I've just passed out, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Um, the top portion represents the three bids that, that we've received. This was put out for bid, uh, summer of last year. Um, we received three bids, one from David A. Nice, one from Horgan, one from Henderson. Um, the lowest bid at the time was, uh, David A. Nice. Since then, we've entered into a contract for engineering and design, and the figure that you have for David A. Nice represents, uh, the most recent, um, bid that, that we've received from them totaling five million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred dollars. That's total construction, engineering and design price. Um, there are some other costs associated with this project that I've built in to get to a final, a total project number. Um, if you go down to the second section, um, there is a contingency, a twelve percent contingency, which is common, uh, for construction projects, that's been added to the price. There's also a construction management, uh, fee, um, that's been added, as well as engineering and testing fee. Um, that's for the testing of concrete after it's poured, any soil testing that needs to be done. Those, um, items generally are not carried by the contractor, they are the responsibility of the property owner. Uh, so we, um, budgeted money for that as well. FF and E is furniture, fixtures and equipment. Uh, that's an additional cost after the prod, the building has been constructed. That gives you a total project cost of six million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand and seventy-two dollars. As you are aware, we've entered into an agreement with David Nice Construction for engineering and design. That agreement was for three hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars. So, we actually are backing that out of the total construction price, cause, um, we already have an agreement for that. The available funds that we currently have budgeted for this project is four million, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-three, I'm sorry, four million, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand and twenty-three dollars, uh, which leaves a deficit of one million, eight hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. Um, along with this spreadsheet, I've also passed out a motion that if you decide to move forward, um, the motion would appropriate, uh, up to that amount, cause hopefully there's some room, still some room for some additional negotiations. Um, but appropriating up to that deficit amount, uh, from the capital fund balance. As you are aware, we've just adopted a budget, um, that included a set aside for future capital projects of about three point eight million dollars, uh, which you could draw from that fund, uh, to move forward with this, this project. Be happy to answer any questions.
So, there's this, so, they, David Nice was down to five point seven, so they're actually are right in line with the other two bids, is what it- So, are we-
They're actually, what, they're actually quite a bit lower than the other two bids.
Well, if you add the one point eight back to the five point seven, then that's-
So, we're, we're all in for five point seven?
Yeah, the, the one point eight is what you need to get to, uh, fully funding this project, to get to the five point seven.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Henderson and Horgan both had just the, the building and site cost, all the soft costs, FF and E and testing, et cetera, was still gonna be on New Kent County's path.
Yes.
Mr. Hathaway, can you remind me of the timeline of this project, please?
Sure, um, I believe it was the FY twenty-three budget, uh, the former sheriff at the time, uh, requested three million dollars in the capital improvement program. Uh, the board, and I believe that was actually after the adoption of, of the FY twenty-three budget, the board borrowed four million dollars, um, for this, this project. Uh, so we currently have for, that's where we got that, our balance from now. The board actually added a million dollars to that after borrowing, uh, the, the four million. Uh, we've also received a little bit of interest from, um, that money now is sitting in an investment account, and we've received some interest for that. But, project began really with the, um, budget process and FY twenty-three.
So when do we expect the project to actually begin, like with the building and?
If this is approved, um, and this motion is adopted, we'll be breaking ground shortly after, um, within months.
Mr. Hathaway, you said that there was three point eight million set aside? So this would take up approximately one point, there'll still be two million dollars set aside in capital, is that what you said?
Well, yes.
Okay, that's-
And, and, and I paused, yes, because actually, it's, it's a little bit more. When we adopted the budget, there was, uh, the capital budget, there was a three point eight million dollar set aside for future capital projects. But during the adoption of the budget, um, the board decided not to move forward with the War and I Recreation Center, which was a one point eight million dollar project. We also placed that in the future set aside too, so you actually have more than the three point eight million, because that one point eight was added to that.
I was just asking, because I know we talked about the high school field, um, coming back around also, and- also and.
That's something to be considered.
Make sure that there's some, if we decide to do that, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I know you've been meeting with Mosley as well about the historic school because space is a huge issue that.
That's true.
That we haven't gotten firm pricing on that yet, correct?
No. After the budget was adopted, that kind of gave us the green light to move forward with the planning process for the historic school. Just this way, I'm sorry, last week, Mosley sat down with the commissioner, revenue treasurer, parts and rec and extension to begin planning and building out that, planning for the build out of, of that space. So we're, we're working on that.
And if this project does not go to the $7 million mark, the rest of this reverts back to the capital fund reserve, correct?
Yes, it does.
I'm not sure who this question is for, and I'm sorry if I missed it, Mr. Hoppsman, you're going through this, but this sheet of comments, who addresses all these comments?
So we drafted the comments collectively, and we addressed all of these with the design team at our 90% charrette.
Okay, so this is just showing us your process?
That was our observations on the 90% review. We wanted to make sure that those comments were incorporated, and I've confirmed that with David Nice Builders that this recent round of pricing we just received has incorporated all of those comments.
Okay, thank you for that. And then, Mr. Hathaway, has there been any talk or conversation about what we're going to do with the current animal control facility once the new one's built?
No, there, there has not been any talk yet. I mean, I've, have kicked around a few ideas. I mean, storage is always a need for the county. And that's probably something that I'm, I'm working through right now, but definitely that could address some of our storage needs here.
Okay, thank you.
It's a pleasure, the board.
We're not here all day. Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the county administrator to execute a construction agreement with David A. Nice Builders, Inc., in a form approved by the county attorney for the construction of a new animal shelter to be located on Airport Road with a construction cost of up to $5,720,600. I further move to appropriate up to $1,850,756 from capital fund balance for the New Kent County Animal Shelter construction project.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, my hesitation is not because I don't think we should do this. I just needed another second to review these numbers since we just got them. So in the future, I hope we can look at this before we come in and have to make a $1.8 million decision. But, you know, I'm the animal lover, so I'm on board.
Well, we can hold it off until the next, for next. So you get support in it? Alright, Ms. Watkins, poll the members.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. Go cut some, go cut some more. Next item is the authorization for closure of county offices on July 5th, 2024. Mr. Hathaway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This one I bring to you after I've, I've noticed a number of employees amongst the county have requested July 5th off, and that's understandable, being that it's the day after a major holiday. So as it became more apparent to me that we were going to be operating as a skeleton crew on July 5th, and as I've seen the actions of several of our neighboring localities as well around us, I would like to request that the board approve an additional holiday of July 5th. If the board chooses to approve July 5th as an additional holiday, I would ask that the resolution that's in your packet be adopted as well. In order for the courts to close, I believe it's by state code that says that that has to be done with the adoption of a resolution by, by the county in order for the courts to get an additional holiday. So therefore, you have the resolution before you to add July 5th to our holiday schedule. Resolution R-18-24.
Is any discussion, concerns?
Just two questions for Mr. Hathaway. How many holidays are included in the employee calendar currently?
I believe we have 12, and I'm looking at our HR staff, 13.
And what's, are there any county facilities that will be open?
Yes. Public safety will be open, all of our fire stations, our sheriff's office definitely would be open, and our trash transfer stations would be open.
And have you estimated the cost to the county to do this?
I've, I've not estimated the cost. There would be an additional cost in regards to our public safety. I mean, well, more so in regards to our fire and rescue department. They do get holiday pay. Our sheriff's department, we treat them a little differently as to, we front load the number of holidays that they have. At the beginning of the year, they get those 13 days that they can take off anytime throughout the year. So we would add an additional day that they would be able to take off throughout the year.
And just in the future, can we come up with a number of what it costs the counties to give another day off?
Oh, yes. Yes, that would be an easy calculation. We, we can do that.
Any other discussion?
I guess it would be offset by some things too, though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolution R-18-24 to authorize the closure of the county offices on Friday, July 5th, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Any other discussion? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Resolution passed. I think we have a couple more items in other business. Mr. Hathaway?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The document that you have before you is a document that's recently, has been reviewed by our, our legal counsel. It is an incentive performance, an economic development incentive performance agreement for CarMax. You've been briefed on this project previously, and we have developed the performance agreement. The agreement will provide a $150,000 incentive to CarMax, who is, has plans in right now to our planning department for site plan approval that would consist of an auction house and what I refer to as a reconditioning facility where they would accept used cars at their retail locations, bring to this facility to be reconditioned and either auctioned, which I believe from conversations with CarMax, the majority of the vehicles brought to this facility would be auctioned, but some may be put back on their retail lot for, for resale. The auctions would be only open to dealers, those who carry dealer license. The incentive agreement I mentioned is for a $150,000 incentive paid over the course of three years. The first payment would be due at the end of the first full year of operation. With this incentive, there are some conditions that CarMax has to comply with as well, which involves a $30 million investment between real property and tangible personal property. The breakdown is in the agreement. And there's also a level of gross receipts that they have to have during that three-year period. I assure you, we've run the tax revenue numbers from CarMax with the incentives that we're proposing. There is no year of CarMax's operation where we would be in the negative, meaning that we would give out more incentives than we receive in tax revenues. So we do believe that this is a, a good opportunity for the county to attract a Fortune 500 business. I believe there's about 120 jobs associated with this as, as well. And I'm sorry, I didn't mention where. This, this project would be located on Route 33 in the Ware Creek Industrial Park.
Mr. Hathaway, after three years, we don't have to pay them anything, correct?
Right, right. This incentive is only for three years. And the reason you're being asked to take action on it, it is the county's economic development incentive policy that any incentive offered over $50,000 requires board approval. The incentive will be paid by the Economic Development Authority, which they'll be taking action on this, this Thursday, but because of the amount, it requires board approval.
Can you tell me how much, for the first year, the 116 million would bring to the county? That's their, that's their performance.
That's what they're required to, to generate in, in gross receipts. I don't have that breakout with me.
So if they reach that, they have to reach that fully. If they don't reach that, then we give them nothing back or we give them up to an amount back?
And that, that's why I look unprepared. I, I intentionally did not bring the breakout with me because that's their revenue numbers, and I'm not sure how comfortable they are with that being shared, shared publicly. But we do have a very detailed breakdown of, of their revenues. The way the incentive agreement works, though, is they will be considered to be in default to this agreement if they don't generate at least 65% of the required investment. Anything above 65%, but less than them meeting the mark, will deduct that from the $50,000 if, I guess proportionately. So if they're off by 25%, we reduce our incentive by 25%.
It also, they have to do a capital investment of 25 million.
That's correct.
And then tangible personal property of almost 6 million.
6 million.
Which they have to pay tax on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So they have to make that investment to get to 50,000.
Yes.
Just a logistic question, is there a reason we didn't receive this until just this morning?
Because it was just approved by our council, the Economic Developments Council, late last week.
Okay, I would appreciate in the future if we're going to be deciding on anything to have ample time to review it.
Well, again, a lot of times with economic development projects, these things are moving. We can push it down the road, but that's, you know, that's a recipe.
Like, because you said if it's going forward on Thursday with the EDA that we need to do it today, I'm just saying that if we did it late last week, today's Tuesday, yesterday was Monday, we could have reviewed it yesterday.
And we, we don't have to take action today. I mean, you can push this till our next meeting, which will give you additional time to review. We're asking that you consider it today, just as, as we're trying, this property has not closed, there's still a lot of factors that could railroad this project, and I think as quick as we can act, the more successful this project is.
I just want ample, I want us, the people that have to make the decisions and be on the hook for the decisions, to be prepared to make them. So just for a consideration in the future, please.
And, and I just want to be clear that you do not have to take action today.
And I'm the one to put it on the agenda, so, I mean, I want, you know, to get it done. I mean, these, these economic projects move extremely quickly.
Mr. Chairman, I received a phone call from council for the EDA yesterday that they had reviewed it after coming back from a vacation, and then that's when this sort of formulated and populated the agenda. So yesterday at approximately 9:00 AM. And to Ms. Pearson's question, the tax rate for B-Pole for CarMax is 15 cents per $100. So if my calculation's correct, that's 174,000 in year one.
How much?
174,000? In year one, where our payment is 50,000? And then?
And that, that's just B-Pole. We'll also get real estate, tangible personal property tax, so.
And we collect that tax and then do a rebate.
That, that, that's correct. And it also specifically states in here that in order to receive the payment, they have to be carrying one of their taxes.
And that would be 187.5 in year two? And then 199.5 in year three?
And that's just the B-Pole? That doesn't include the real estate and personal property taxes that we will receive?
That's correct.
It's part of the game now. I mean, you have to give some type of incentives to, to attract these businesses now, if you want to get them. Any other discussion?
What is the motion we need to make? What are we? Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the county administrator to execute an economic development incentives performance agreement in a form approved by the county attorney with the Economic Development Authority of New Kent County and CarMax Incorporated.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Any other discussion? Ms. Watkins, poll the members.
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And I have one other item. The item that you have before you is for consideration of a new position at the Economic Development Office. As you are aware, throughout the year, we have numerous part-time positions at the Economic Development Department to man the front counter, which helps us staff during the weekends from Memorial Day to Labor Day, as well as special events that, that we have throughout the year. It is getting more difficult to staff those part-time positions right now. I believe all of our active part-time positions are college students, so they're only with us for a short period of time. What we're proposing, and you currently have, I believe it's about $116,000, and that's adopted. and that's adopted in the economic development budget, uh, for part-time staffing. What we're proposing is that we utilize that existing funding, uh, to provide for one full-time employer with the title of office manager slash coordinator, and you have the job description before you. I'm recommending that that position come in at a, uh, pay grade of a thirteen. I've computed with benefits, um, and taxes and everything, the full cost of that position would be about eighty-eight thousand dollars. That's a rough, um, calculation and, um, depending on who we fill the position, that number could change, it could definitely decrease. Our personnel policies manual, which I've given you the page, the relevant page in, in the handout, states that new positions, um, require, uh, the approval of the board of supervisors. They either have to be adopted with the budget process or be approved separately by the board of supervisors. So, uh, you have a copy of the job description before you. Um, there is a proposed motion, if you're not prepared to take action today, um, definitely this is an item that we can take action on at our upcoming meeting or a future meeting. I feel that we are covered right now because we have that, those summer part-time positions, uh, with the college students here, um, and helping us out. But when they leave in August, uh, we're gonna have a hole to fill.
Hathaway, I might suggest here that, uh, since we just got this, let's look over this and maybe at a, a board meeting, let's, let's, let's discuss it then to give us time to, to look over this.
Yeah, Mr. Hathaway, particularly I was going to ask, um, so they would stay on board until August?
Yes, and we, we feel though to that even with the creation of the full-time position, we'll still have funding to bring them on during the summer months as, as well when they're out, out of school, out of college. So we can still continue, um, to work the, uh, part-time students during the summer hours, even with the creation of this full-time position.
I agree with Mr. Evelyn, I'd rather take a look at this and read over it and, and maybe vote on it at the next meeting.
Everybody okay with that?
And we know Mr. Moore really loves the EDA, so I feel like he should have a chance to review this.
That's a good point.
And this would be in addition to the new EDA director we just hired?
Yes, no, no change i- in the budget, their budget will cover this cost, um, yes. I mean, because the problem is, the new economic development director, um, she's, is busy. Uh, she's out and about attending meetings, um, meeting with business prospects. So there is a responsibility of having someone at the visitor's center the entire time and there's other duties, uh, that this person can do. There's several events, uh, that this person, uh, will be working closely with Gail to organize. Also, economic development trips that our economic development director is taking. There's a lot of research involved prior to those, those trips and this person could be helping with that. If you read the job description, there is plenty, uh, to keep this person busy.
And do we have, um, sufficient space at the visitor's center for another full-time person?
We do, uh, this will be a front counter position. And, and as you know, you know, during the off months, um, we basically currently, we've been down to two, uh, part-time staff keeping the front counter manned. One person is no longer, really we're down to one because due to health issues, uh, we're down to one and we don't believe that it's gonna be too long before we lose the other one that, that we have too.
What's the, uh, pay grade of, uh, other person up there now?
Um, well, this, this is a new, new position, so I, I don't have anything to compare it to someone now. But at a pay grade thirteen, that is, I believe, s- low sixties. That brings it into the low sixties, um, and on the max end, it's low to mid eighties. I think it's like eighty-four, um, on the max end.
Would this person report to Gail?
This person would report to Gail, yes, whose title is, I'm sorry, yes, it, it would.
Well, we'll, to give us a chance to look at this. Any other? Business, board members have?
I just wanted to, um, talk about Relay for Life on Saturday, it starts at four at the New Kent High School, um, as well as the Independence Day celebration on Sunday. I hope everybody will come out to those great community events, um, great fellowship to be had, so, thank you.
Thank you, I was gonna mention that.
Just like to add, Independence Day from seven PM to ten PM, so hope they see everybody out.
Yep, you can go online and look at a map, uh, to see where all the food trucks and all the, uh, entertainment will be and where they're gonna shoot the fireworks off.
I've heard Lady Whistledown will be there too.
Alright, if there's no other business, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board of supervisors will be held at six PM on Monday, July eighth, twenty twenty-four and the next work session will be held at nine AM on Tuesday, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, both in the boardroom of the county administration building. And I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart, Mrs. Watkins, poll the members.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.